We thank the Lord for He can inspire us, lead us into session. The throne of grace, we thank God for all for the opportunity to have the access to the throne of grace because of Christ Jesus. We serve an awesome God. Before we get started, can we just put our hands together and do what we are ought to do? And what is our duty? And that is to serve the Lord with gladness, to bless His holy name. This is just our duty. Amen. Amen. He saved us to serve Him with gladness. Amen. And we are glad to be children of the Most High, Most High God. We have learned so much. As far as the nature of our Father, the decree is patience. We talked about the power of God, the goodness of God, the wrath of God, the faithfulness of God, His grace, His cursings, solitarity of God. We talked about His holiness, His blessings, His mercy, His guidance, His gifts, His love. And so now we at a point where we want to look at sovereignty, sovereignty of God. This is like all the others, this is but a crumb, lessons is but a crumb from the, from all that we can learn and still learn about, the Lord. But we try to glean as much as we can in the time that we, we have. We can, we can sit all year on these topics about the nature and characteristics of God. We can sit all year talking about one topic and still not exhaust who He is and all that comes out of that attribute. But what we try to do is just touch as much, much as possible to get some understanding to start our thirst and hunger after righteousness, to get an understanding where it would increase our faith, it would increase our, our knowledge, get an understanding so that we can start applying it in our lives. How many can say with, with learning the nature and characteristics of God, it is really just open your eyes to a lot of things in your life and just the Father that you serve, is open your eyes. You know, we, we, we are past that, "Jesus loves me, this I know for the Bible tells me so." We passed that. Now we are maturing and getting deeper in the Word of God. Because I don't know if you thought about it or even looked at it, those trials get deep. So I can't have baby faith. Those trials get deep. Those challenges are maturing. Every day that you get older, every day on your journey, notice those, those hits and those challenges and those obstacles are maturing. They're getting a little stronger. And so we need to know more about the God that we serve and all He has done for us in Christ Jesus to be able to stand against those. The Bible says, "The wiles of the devil," those fiery dots that He tries to aim and shoot our way. And I think many of them, many of the dots or many of the attacks stay longer because of our lack of understanding. I think many times we linger around situations only because of our lack of understanding. If we only knew the God that we serve and all that He's done for us, we will be strengthened in many of the areas that we are weak in. And so tonight, we want to look at the sovereignty of God. Topic so deep that I had to get you some homework at the end. I had to. I just could not let this topic go without giving you some homework for next week. But we want to look at the sovereignty of God. Is everybody ready? Amen. You got your pencils and your highlighters. It's going to be a lot of scriptures. So you might want to plug your computer in, your, your phone in, because we're going to be dancing through some scriptures tonight when we speak on this subject. But before we move on, I just want to give you all another quote. Another quote that says, "We should," let me get myself out of the way if I can, "we shall always be full of gratitude, because it was God's mercy that reached us and made us vessels of mercy." Let me go back to that. So we should always be full of thanks, full of gratitude, because it was God's mercy that reached us and made us vessels of mercy. What's amazing is He has made you and I vessels of mercy. And God is the content within us. We are filled with Him. He has made us vessels of mercy. So when you look at another saint, you're looking at another vessel of, of God's mercy. And that's what He has made us. He has made us vessels of His mercy, where He is now the one who has filled us. He is the content within us, which is powerful, powerful to know. And when we begin to look at this, this study on the sovereignty of God, I pray that it just blow your, your spiritual mind away, understanding this and seeing all who God is. We saints need to be in a place where we are at all, all that He has done, all that He is doing, all that He reveals or illuminates through His word to us. We should remain in awe. We should always remain in awe because of the God we serve. All right. So let me ask this question before we get started. And the first question is, and I need you all to answer me back, since God is sovereign, what does that mean for us and our life? Since God is sovereign, what does that mean for us in our life? Since God is sovereign. Anyone? Not all at the same time. Go for it, Red.
I would say two things. One, it means by lives, that our lives are indeed in His hands. And that leads to a second point is, when you're dealing with a sovereign, there's no appeal authority. There's no one higher to go to. So with us having a right to enter into His throne of grace boldly, we are at the actual source in the one who has all of the answers.
Okay, okay. Good answer, good answer. Anyone else? Thank you, Red, for that. Anyone else? Since God is sovereign, what does that mean for us in our life, since He's sovereign?
Good evening, everybody. Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you. I was just thinking that it just means that since He is all-powerful, has all the authority, that means that we're, I mean, just kind of put it in kindergarten language, we're, we're going to be okay as children of God. We serve the Creator, the powerful one. It means that our lives is in His hands and when we trust and believe in Him, that we have nothing to worry about. He, He is the supreme authority, like He, 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 we have nothing to worry about with Him as the sovereign God.
Okay, all right. Deaconess Barnes?
Amen. Since God is sovereign, which means He can do anything He wants to do, when He wants to do it and how He wants to do it. So for us in our lives, that means how He's ordered our steps and the things that He allows us to go through, the situations that He places us in. I'm not talking about the things that we're reaping as from what we've sown and, and you know, things are coming back to us because of the seeds that we sown. But I'm saying from God's point of view and from His vantage point, He can do anything He wants to do. He can allow us to go through anything He wants us to go through, and He can do it how and when He wants to, because He's sovereign. He's just the supreme ruler. He's sovereign.
Okay, okay. All right. Anyone else want to take a stab at it?
Good evening, family. Since God is sovereign in my, in my life, I can speak for myself. And knowing that the life work is ups and downs, things you go through in life, even when you don't understand it, even in my midst of confusion and everything, the truth is that I know that God is all and all, and I lean on Him. So I have no reason to be afraid of anything, even if I don't understand it. I know that He is the Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the end. So knowing that He know it all, I might talk about yesterday, I might talk about what is going on right now, but I cannot talk about tomorrow, but He is the one that knows tomorrow. So I have to lean on Him. So since He is sovereign in life. Amen.
Okay, amen, amen. Do you know how unselling it would be to, to, to know that God can handle it all? How unselling it would be in prayer, to pray, but, but, but wondering if He's going to need some help, some extra help to handle what you're dealing with or going through? How unselling it would be and how shaky, unsure the prayers would be when there is no full assurance of who God is? And many times our prayers are shaken, our faith is shaken. And I'll say it, I said it before and I'll say it again, because of what we don't know or what we don't understand. And so it makes us unsettled. It makes us sure of some things that we deal with, that we believe they are comparable with us being part of it. But those uncomparable things, sometimes we are shaky whether God can handle it because of what we don't know about Him. Are you with me? It's, it's like, how would you know about what's happening if you don't read the newspaper? If you don't listen to the news, or if you don't get some form of information about your surroundings or what you're dealing with? How would you know? And so if, if we're not making it our, our quest and pursuit to really know about the God that we're serving, the one who we say has everything under control and who's leading us, if we don't know much about Him, it will cause us to be unsettled when we find ourselves having to deal with something that's bigger than us, something that's more challenging than us, or even the surprises that we have to many times face. So it's very important for us to know about all that we are in Christ Jesus. And there should be a contrast from who we are now, what's going for us, and who we were and what we did not have. See, it's, this is, is, is very important to know that when you were alienated from God, because you did not know Christ as Lord and Savior, your prayers were dismissed. There was no access to the throne of grace. There was no being looked at as a child, but being looked at as one who we bailed against the Father and His work through the Son. But to know now in Christ Jesus that I have access to the throne of grace, I am now considered a child, royal priesthood. I am more than a conqueror. To know that should increase not only the gratitude, not only our faith in prayer, but it should increase in who we know we are and who we believe we are now, that we are children of God. So it should be a difference. If I'm feeling the same way I felt before Christ, then where's the joy? If I'm, if I'm thinking the same way that I was thinking before Christ, then where is the, the knowledge and the understanding? If I'm being knocked down more than I did before I was saved, then where is the more than conqueror that I, that the word is claiming me to be? You, you understand what I'm saying? So it's very important for us to, to know who God is. So Skinny, I think you had, if not, I'll move on. Okay, all right. So let me ask this, this next question. What, what blessings do we have when we put our trust in the sovereign God? What blessings do we have when we put our trust in the sovereign God? What blessings? This is, I feel like a librarian. It's very quiet. So I want to make sure I'm in the right class. Sometimes you can be a substitute teacher at the wrong class. Just want to make sure that this is Bible study tonight. Okay, go ahead, Red.
I would kind of go back to the fact that there is no one higher than our God. So our God has promised us anything, then that means if anything less than what He said doesn't measure up to what He has said, and we can rest in that.
Okay, okay. All right. Anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. I would say for me, it allows me to wake up every morning with a smile on my face. Despite what I see on the news or experience when I go out into the world and deal with impatient people or people that don't have that same relationship, you know, it, it doesn't change my stance or my peace, you know? If anything, I pray that it allows me to emulate that and that they can say, you know, what, what is that that, that she has? I'd like to have that too, you know? So I, I say, I just think His sovereignty is, is a blessing, because every morning I wake up, I can wake up and, and say, "Thank you," and I can wake up feeling joy.
Amen, amen, amen. That's, that's a good answer. Isn't it good to know that God has it all under control with all the mess that's going on right now? And, and we're just saying that because we're in, we're living in it. But I'm sure in the 60s, they were saying that. I'm sure in the 50s, they were saying that. With all the mess that's going on, what carries us through, what holds us together is to know outside of all this, we have a God who has a plan and He's in control. All right, here, here's the last question I want to ask. How can understanding God's sovereignty be the key to dealing with anxiety? How can understanding God's sovereignty be the key to dealing with anxiety?
Okay, that, I, I go, I would say like, you see, anxiety is like, it comes from unknown, you know, the unknown situation, because you don't know what tomorrow is going to bring. But the thing is that since I understand that God, God is sovereign in my life, then I don't have to wake up, getting busy magnifying my problems, my situations. I would rather wake up and magnify God, so I can see God in the bigger picture in my life. Because the more you see God in the bigger picture, the more you are suppressing your problems, understanding that God got your back regardless of your situation. So I would be more optimistic in my faith.
Okay, more optimistic in, in your faith. Deaconess Barnes, I think you were, okay.
Yes. I believe it could help us deal with anxiety, because God being sovereign produces in me as a child of God, it produces faith, it produces peace. I know I have the victory. I know I have the favor of God. I don't have to worry. I can cast my cares on Him. And just knowing who He is really, really helps me live according to His word. And He doesn't want me to be upset and anxious or, you know, have anxiety. So I just put my faith in Him. I put my trust in Him. I believe what His word tells me, and I just walk out in peace.
Amen, amen. It, it, it gives us that, that peace, that, that reassurance that He has it under control, even when it seems uncontrollable to you and I. Even when it seems like witches is outside of our hands or impossible. Isn't it good to know that Jesus, when Jesus said this, and when God spoke this in the Old Testament, that all things are possible? If you, if you really think about that, with, with all that you may be dealing with, to know that all things are possible. The impossible is possible with God. That, that's, there has to be one with power to tell you, "You can give me the impossible, and only I can make it possible." It shows the power and the sovereignty, the authority, that the Father we, we belong to has, that He can make the impossible possible. Okay? Let's, 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 let's look at this. We often think that we are in control than we really are. We make plans and do certain things to accomplish those plans, and yet, in the end, we do not have absolute certainty over the outcome. We make these plans, and I don't know about you, but how many have planned things out and then plans change? You set things out, we're going to do this and do that, and we're going to do this, we're going to handle this, and this year we're going to do this, and then plans change. And, and not almost at the end of completion. Sometimes plans have changed right after you just said it. Things have shifted and plans have changed. So we're not absolutely certain over the outcome of things, right? We can make plans, but we're not for certain that that plan will come to pass. All right? We do not control everything. I know you thought you did, but I just want to knock over your apple cart tonight to let you know that you are not in control of everything. You're in control of some things, but you're not in control of everything. There is one outside of us who has the final say. And knowing and understanding this is for our good, that I'm not in control of everything, but there is one who's in control of it all. But, but knowing this is for our good. That's why it's important, knowing it's for our good. Now, I, I pray you would give me your undivided attention since the day you came here to Word Bible Church, but tonight I need you to give me your undivided attention to understand this, so it could cause you to rest even more tonight. Knowing the sovereignty of God shows, soothes the anxiety that the world may try and bring, or the anxiety that we welcome on, because we're not sure of things, or we're challenged by the unknowns. Someone said the unknowns. And so knowing the sovereignty of God, that He is sovereign, it should settle our spirit. It should put us at rest. Tonight, I want to put you at rest. Amen? Let's turn first to James chapter four, verse 13 through 15. Let me get Red to read that. Now, it's going to be a lot of scriptures. So like I said, I want you to highlight them, write them down, or take screenshots. It's fine. James chapter four, verse 13 through 15, Reverend Greenlee.
James chapter four, "Now listen, you who say, 'Today or tomorrow, we will go to this or that city, spend a year there, carry on business and make money.' Why, you do not even know what will happen tomorrow. What is your life? You are missed at appears for a little while and then vanishes. Instead, you ought to say, 'If it is the Lord's will, we will live and do this or that.'"
Now, how many used to think, when you say that, that you were almost cursing yourself? I don't know if you understand what I'm saying. We used to say, "If the Lord's will asks you, I don't know if I'm going to make it or not." But what James is saying is acknowledging and recognizing that everything, it's all in God's hands, that we can make plans, but it's all in God's hands. You can make plans for the next five years, which is okay, but you need to know that it's all in God's hands. Do you not know, we can say in 10 years from now, we're going to be doing this, in three years, here to Word Bible Church is going to be here, and the Lord said, "You don't even know. I'm coming tonight." We can make plans, but it's still all in God's hands. So what James is telling us is that it's fine for, for the plans and the goals to be set, but we do know it's all contingent upon the sovereign God that we serve. Amen? All right. So man has been given a free will for a period of time, but he is not a free-moor agent who can act upon whatever he wills. We have been given a free will where we, God allowed us to make decisions in our lives. But we're not free-moor agents, all right? That we can do whatever we will, because if anything, if we had the power, I will will myself to live forever. If I had that power, all right? I will will myself to live forever. I will myself to not have any pain, any suffering, anything. If we had that, that final full authority, or if we were sovereign people, what God has done, He has, He has given us free will. Now, when you talk about free will and the sovereignty of God, this can open up a can of discussion. The theologians and scholars have, have battled back and forth with the free will, the predestination free will, and the sovereignty of God. And so we're going to try not to get into that. I know many have questions, but we're going to try to keep it where we all can understand it. All right? And so God has given us a free will, right, so that you can make the choices and decisions. He has given us free will. This is why when one goes to hell, it's because of the decision that they made. What we're going to see tonight is not that it was God's desire, but your free will, it was your choice to go there. All right? And so we have been given this free will for a period of time. And, and here's what's amazing, for the time that's allotted to us, that free will is to come to know the Lord. Now, the Lord will set up every merge and sign, every stop sign, every stop light. He will put every barbed wire up, every fence, even with the try to deter us or to turn us towards Him to receive salvation with our free will. Because God is not going to make us do anything, all right? If that was the case, then why do you have to command your soul to bless the Lord? God is not going to make us do anything. If that's the case, then He has created all robots. And that was not God's design or His desire. His desire is for man to freely serve Him with gladness. This is why you got to stop trying to make people do what they would normally do if their heart is where it's supposed to be. All right? You kind of stop making people feel bad, because in their heart is not to do what you think as a child of God they should be doing. It's based on their decision and their will. So God is sovereign, but His sovereign choosing, He even allows man to act in opposition to His perfect will. His perfect will is, His will is valema, is the Greek word, and that's which is God's desire or counsel for us. Look how powerful and awesome God He is. God has given us free will, and with His sovereignty, all right? He allows even- Uh, he allows even man to choose in opposition against his perfect will. The Greek word valima, alright? Um, his desire or his counsel. So, uh, with our free will, we can still deny or discredit or refuse his perfect will. He's that sovereign that he does not get upset or God is not moved because we choose to oppose his perfect will. His will is valima, that's the Greek word, alright? His desire or his counsel. I wish that all would be saved. Um, uh, I wish that all will come to know me as their father, uh, the perfect will of God. Um, but he is so sovereign that he even allows man to act in opposition to his perfect will. Are y'all with me so far? Alright, I'm gonna try to work this out, alright? Because there's still, even though he's a sovereign God and controlled of everything, we still have a, uh, human responsibility. God can put his perfect will out there, but it's up to you and I to respond to his will, to his perfect will that he's putting out there, alright? That's the valima, the will of God. But not, uh, his ultimate plan. So God has a valima and then he has a valima, alright? Uh, his perfect will and then his ultimate plan, alright? That's the Greek word, valima is his plan. Valima is his will, valima is his plan. His plan, valima, refers to a plan based upon careful deliberation and then is most often used with respect to counsel, the counsel of God. So bulay, or is the Greek word out of, or the root word out of valima, frankly indicates God's plan written in his word, which is predetermined and inflexible. Let me explain this. Uh, God has a will and then God has a plan. He will you to come to know him, Sister Laverne. But his plan is still to judge this world. Are you with me? That's predetermined, that's inflexible. He's not gonna change that, he's not gonna move that. That's a plan that's already in place, he's sovereign. He'll allow you to valima, he'll allow you to oppose his, his perfect desire, his perfect will. Uh, but you cannot thwart his valima, his plan, right? Uh, the world will be judged, that is his plan, you can't change that. Are you with me here? Uh, but what you can not, or what you can change is not heeding to his perfect will with your will, opposing his will. Am I, am I getting anyone confused? Am I?
Yeah, that is, okay, I'm more like from what I'm, uh, uh, from what I'm, uh, listening, uh, or hearing you, it's like, once we are born, God have already declared who we are. And maybe based on the lifestyle we are living, or we are not conditioning our body to align to the will of God over our lives. So we can do stuff that can take us contrary to what God, you know, uh, how God built us or who he wants us to be. So that, that, uh, it's not like there's a new thing, it's already in us, but we are the one depriving ourselves from being who God called us to be based on our lifestyles.
Amen, uh, amen. So let me give you an, an example here, thank you, uh, Deke. Um, you are saved, uh, Reverend Greenlee, and you shall see him face to face. That's his plan. Alright, it's predetermined, it's inflexible, the devil can't stop them. Um, and his will is for you to follow his plan, his will, alright? Now, um, we can go off of his will, which is why we find ourselves in the woods sometimes, we find ourselves in situations that we ask his grace and mercy to pull us out, because we didn't follow his will, alright? But his plan is predetermined and inflexible. The devil will bow down, that's his plan. Are you with me here? That's his plan, that's predetermined and that's inflexible, that's the valima of God, the plan of God. And then you have the valima of God, the will of God, alright? You and I don't always follow the valima of God, the will of God. It is his will for you and I to bless him. It is his will for you and I, uh, to govern ourselves according to his word. Uh, but what we cannot, uh, oppose is his plan. Are, are you with me? Uh, uh, I can't take myself out of heaven if I wanted to. Because his plan was, once I was saved, once I accepted his son as my Lord and Savior, I have become now a child of God, child of God, it's predetermined, it's inflexible. The reason why the devil is mad is because the plan of God on our lives. And because the plan of God on our lives, he tries to get us off the will of God in our lives. Are y'all with me here? I just wanna walk through this. Uh, so if you can get you to just do some things outside of the will of God, you'll feel like God's plan has been thwarted about you or you. Uh, no, uh, the plan of God's gonna get you back where you need to be. Um, but it's easy to follow the straight and narrow, the will of God, uh, than to go off the will of God. Are, are y'all with me? Okay, here's the valima and the valima. Uh, here's an example, uh, turn to Exodus chapter nine, verse, verse one. Exodus chapter nine, verse one, uh, Pharaoh, um, I don't know how my R got messed up with my word, but Pharaoh resisted God's valima, his will, but could not resist the valima of God, the plan of God, alright? Let's look at Exodus chapter, chapter nine, verse one.
Then the Lord said unto Moses, go in unto Pharaoh and tell him, thus saith the Lord God of the Hebrews, let my people go that they may serve me.
Okay, go and tell them, here's my desire, just let my people go. Okay, that's the valima of God. This is all under the sovereignty of God. The valima of God is his will, his desire, his counsel, let my people go. Is the valima of God the plan of God? Well, if you don't let them go, I'm still going to do what I have to do. Are y'all with me here? God gives counsel that God has a plan, it's all under the sovereignty of God. God says, the day you hear my voice, harden not your heart. That's the will, that's the counsel of God, that's the, uh, what I wanna say, the advice of God, the, the glory or holy advice of God. The valima or the plan of God is, if not, you still will be judged and be sentenced to hell. Uh, that's, that's already, uh, predetermined and flexible, all under the sovereignty of God. So Moses gave Pharaoh, uh, now this is, when he, when we talk about the sovereignty of God, when we talk about, uh, um, uh, um, the attributes or the characteristics of God, um, let it be said, Pastor Cunningham don't know nothing. It, it's the mystery of God. I get swallowed up every time I study about the Father that we serve and his son that made it possible for us to have salvation. When we start to look at the attributes and characteristics of God, I get swallowed up in who God is. Um, uh, because you think about it, Moses, tell Pharaoh, he is my holy counsel to Pharaoh. Just let my people go. It'd be easier for you to let my people go, this is my perfect will. If you let him go, uh, uh, this is my perfect will. Here's the sovereignty of God, here's the mystery of God, but I already know he's not gonna let him go. So I have to continue with my valima, which will not be thwarted, which not be, will not be moved to the side, it will pop in. Now, you could've saved your own firstborn if you would've just keyed it to my counsel. Uh, but because I am a sovereign God, I know what you're going to do, what you thought about doing, what you're not gonna do. Uh, I already know, uh, Moses, uh, I'm gonna harden Pharaoh's heart. Not to be funny, because I already know he's gonna deny my counsel, my valima, my holy advice to him. Are y'all with me here? I, I'm trying my best not to shout, uh, I get so excited. Uh, and so, uh, uh, Moses tell Pharaoh to let my people go, let them go. And you keep reading, you realize that, that Pharaoh decided not to. So naturally, man would prefer to be free from God's domain and to be the captain of his own soul and destiny. This is why man fight, because man do not want to submit to someone or authority. Uh, which makes one abhor the idea of God's sovereignty. Nobody wants to be under control. This is why people got problems with pastors and shepherds and leaders and and bosses and CEOs, because nobody wants no one to tell them anything. And so here, because, uh, man preferred to be free from God's domain, uh, man wants to be the captain of their own soul until they find out where their own soul is taking them. They wanna be captain of their own soul, they wanna make their own decisions, they wanna go their own way, and they, then they want God to be the jack in the box. Let me just wind you up and you pop up when I need you, and then I'll just put you back down in the box when I don't need you. Uh, and this is why man now, uh, shuns the idea of sovereignty. Nobody wants to talk about, uh, uh, God in control. Nobody wants to talk about somebody over top of them, one who has power over everything. Nobody wants to talk about that. Nobody wants to talk about the sovereignty of God, because naturally, we prefer to be free, wanna be controlled of our own kingdom. And so the attitude only expresses man to be rebellious creatures. With that attitude, it causes us to be rebellious creatures. But though he attempts to read himself of God's sovereignty over him, we're trying in vain, because we cannot escape God. Let me stop right there. As much as man tries to, uh, out, uh, get outside of God, um, I need to tell, uh, those who are calling in, those who are trying, that you're, you're trying in vain, because we cannot escape God. He is sovereign, uh, he is controlled, he's over every, everything, alright? Man tries to attempt, uh, um, to be, um, their own boss over, over their life. And then now the teachings are, you control of your own destiny. Listen, if I'm in control of my own destiny, sister Esther, I don't care about my boss, I don't care about my job, I ain't care about no house, I care about living forever if I'm in control of my own destiny. Surely, it's gonna be those things that's gonna make some sense to me. I'm a decree and I'm a declare, and I got the power to do all things. Surely, it's gonna be when that cold come, when that flu come my way, I don't want it to come. Uh, but, but God shows us time and time again that we cannot escape him or escape his sovereignty. Are y'all with me so far? Anybody got any questions? Okay, alright, uh, so all sin is, in its nature, is the spoiling of God, of his sovereignty. Just trying to get away of God being in control. And so the sovereignty of God has been invaded by the, the, the violations of man. Um, man has been from day one trying to violate, uh, the sovereignty of God, God being in control. That's the idea that Satan in Genesis, uh, tried to present or presented to Eve and Adam. God just don't want you to be like him, uh, being in control, as if God has a problem with that which he has made. Uh, 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 are y'all with me? Uh, that's, that's like bringing a puppy home. And, and then the puppy, uh, if he could talk, say, you know, I ain't sleeping here, you gonna start feeding me at eight o'clock? And, uh, you gonna make sure I go out to the bathroom, and you gonna look at that dog and say, I just bought you for three hundred dollars, I can send you away. Uh, I can cage you when I want you. How dare you talk to me as if you got my authority? You don't even realize that, that if I didn't pick you, you would still be in the pet store. I, I don't know what, the ride home must've got you a little shaken up, because, uh, now you're swelling up and you think you above me. This is what man does. Man now wanna raise their fist at the one who breathed inside them and made them living souls. Man wanting now tell God how to make them. You didn't make me this, you didn't make me that. You didn't make me a boy, you didn't make me a girl. You, you mistaken. Uh, you didn't know how and what you wanted to do when you were creating me, as if God is a little confused. Now, it's, it's amazing that, uh, God did everything in order till he met you. And then now he's confused of how he wants to create you. Isn't that funny? Uh, he started Adam and Eve, he made Adam man, Eve woman, he knew what he was doing, he put Adam to sleep and out of Adam pulled a rib and made Eve. Do how to do that, performed surgery and everything with nobody around but the Godhead. And now here you are, Johnny come lately, twenty twenty-two, wanna tell God he made a mistake on who you are and what he needs to do for your life. Man, since the beginning of time, has been trying to be, uh, like God has. Uh, you know, you call yourself a small G, but it's a reason why it's a small G. I don't care what you call yourself, but you're never gonna have, uh, the sovereignty, uh, that the God that we serve has. And man has been violating the sovereignty of God and had been invading that with their sins. Uh, 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 am I helping somebody right now? I, I, I'm just trying to talk as soft as possible, because I, I'm, I'm gonna jump out of my seat and I haven't even gotten into this yet. So most of the errors of men may be resolved into a denial of God's sovereignty. All can be traced back to the same response Adam had, wanting to be independent and sovereign as God is. Uh, uh, most of our errors, when you think about it, most of our errors, and when you think about it, Lord Ari, know what you want me to preach. Most of our errors, when you think about it, most of the things that we deal with is because we want to be in control. How many of us have been in uncontrollable situations because we took control? Oh, that, 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 that made me think about something. How many of us been in situations that we, uh, try to take out of God's hands and it has now been uncontrollable? Because we try to be in control. Uh, uh, and so many of our errors in life, uh, may have been the resolve or may have been the result of us denying God's sovereignty. Many of us have been in positions because, uh, we deny that God has control over everything. And so it's critical that we learn what the Bible says. Otherwise, we may very likely get things wrong. We need to know what the Bible says, not what pastor says. Uh, what the Bible says, and, and here's what's so wonderful, God's gonna tell you about him. You ain't gotta ask me, he'll tell you about him. Uh, uh, Sister Laverne, you don't have to ask trustee Spears about me, ask me. Uh-huh, because, uh, she ain't gonna get it all right. Uh, Deacon Arnold, if you wanna know about Deaconess Brinson, you can't ask First Lady, go to Deacon Brinson. Alright, because she's the only one that can tell you everything about her. Are y'all with me here? Uh, and so it's, this is critical, because we need the Lord to tell us everything about, about him. Um, if, if not, then what happens is it'd confuse, uh, you and I with his attributes, having an understanding of his characteristics, okay? Give me a second, let me, um, let me, uh, fix this real quick. I want you all to, to see this. Anybody got any questions? Why, why, uh, fix this to make sure we, we good? Anybody have any questions? Surely, I'm at the library. No one has any questions? No one has any questions?
Teaching good, Pastor.
I was gonna say the same thing. We don't have questions, we, we, we soaking it up.
Alright, let me see if I got this right now.
I have a question, Pastor.
Okay, go for it.
Since God is sovereign, why did he give us a free will?
Since God is sovereign, why did he give us free, free will? Well, because he is sovereign. I know that may sound like, uh, a silly answer, but because he's sovereign, because he's sovereign, uh, God did not create, uh, I said in the beginning, robots. God created man, uh, to, to have dominion over this world, uh, to, to walk with him, to have a relationship with him as, as son. Uh, to, to walk with him, to have a relationship with him as, as son and, and father. Uh, God created us with a will that our desire will always be to serve the one who created us, alright? That's the sovereignty of God, the authority of God. Uh, and God is not threatened by what he has given us. This is what um, many fail to realize. He's not, he's not threatened, he's not threatened with what he has, what he has given us. He's not threatened by what he has given us. Uh, uh, this is what the enemy tried to um, uh, say to Eve. Uh, that God, in other words, uh, he's threatened that you will be like him. But it's, there's no way that which has been created can ever be like that which has, who has created it. Are you with me here? So God is not threatened by the things he's, so his giving us free will doesn't threaten him when you're in control. Uh, uh, are you with me here? Um, when you're in control. Uh, and, and so when, when we allow ourselves to entertain the thought that, that God uh, somehow threatened by what he has blessed us or favors with. Um, we are heeding into the, heeding to the wrong voice, the voice of the enemy, alright? He's a sovereign God, he's a loving God, he's controlled everything. And he is not threatened by what he has gifted, blessed or uh, worked through us. Are, are y'all with me? Did they help you out, Sister, uh, Deaconess Barnes? Are you there? Can everybody hear me? Okay, okay. Did they help you, uh, Deaconess Barnes? Okay, okay. So there are those who do reference scripture, most, mostly taking a verse or two out of context, which they use to support their predetermined understanding of God's nature. Um, but that's backwards. Uh, we, many pull just scriptures out to um, try to back up what they think. Um, or their predetermined, predetermined understanding of God's nature. I, I did it again, turn of Matthew twenty-two, uh, twenty-nine, for some reason didn't work. Alright, many of us, what we're doing is we're taking scriptures out of context to try to prove, instead of letting God tell us um, who he is. Alright, Matthew twenty, twenty, twenty-nine in the ESV.
Uh, let me get ESV. But Jesus answered them, you are wrong because you know neither the scriptures nor the power of God.
Okay, so Jesus said, you're wrong because you don't even know the scriptures nor the power of God. Here we are, uh, many of us, um, and it is, we fail to admit that most of our understanding is from self-talk. Most of our understanding is handed down information and not from the scriptures. He said, you don't even know the power of God or the scriptures. So we don't look for passages in the Bible to prove our viewpoints. Instead, we should look at the whole counsel of scripture and adjust our views to match that truth. Alright, to match that truth. Okay? So the word sovereign or sovereignty appears three hundred and five times in the Bible. Alright? The prefix solve means over and the word reign means to rule from a throne, sovereign. Alright, um, to rule from uh, a, a throne. Anytime you want me to stop, just, just unmute yourself and just holler back at me. Alright? So this word uh, is formed from, from three different roots. And all three roots indicates a leadership of great height. When you talk about sovereign or sovereignty, alright? The original root indicates to move in a straight line, the sovereignty of God. Or the sovereign God, uh, root word indicates to move in a straight line. When God talks, it's always, uh, his will is always direct, it's always straight. He's coming from above, uh, who controls all and everything, alright? Um, and so sovereign or sovereignty, the, the root words, all uh, boils down to, to move in a straight, a straight line. Okay? So now sovereignty is the state or the circumstance, the area of being the supreme authority. And this term indicates complete independence and self-government. God is sovereign all by him himself. Alright? Uh, now remember, we talking about the attributes and characteristics of God. Uh, and so don't get shaken and say, well, you ain't saying nothing about Jesus and the Holy Spirit because we talking about the Godhead. We're now just speaking of the attributes and characteristics of God, the Father. Are y'all with me here? Alright? Alright, so sovereignty is the state of, state or the circumstance, the area of being the supreme authority. The sovereignty of God. He is independent, he's self-government. Right? Uh, there is no other government. Okay? Um, when you don't like his answer, he is the supreme court. When you don't like his law, uh, there's no one else that can thwart his law. Are y'all with me here? Uh, you either like it or you don't like it. Uh, because there's no one else that you can go to because he is the supreme court. Are, are y'all with me here? Uh, you might as well take your little law and walk back down the street because uh, he's the only one. He's the highest authority, he's the supreme authority. When you speak of sovereignty, you're speaking of a state or the circumstance or the area being of supreme authority. He sits in authority. Our Father sits in authority. He is the supreme authority. Can I help you out here so that you don't let the enemy get you shaken? Uh, the Bible tells us, uh, looking at Joel and then also in the New Testament, that Satan, listen, he'll go to the throne of God. And he'll accuse, well, who's sitting on the throne, ladies and gentlemen? Who's sitting on the throne? Who's approaching who? See, you understand this deception uh, of the enemy. I have you thinking that there's two thrones. No, there's one throne. And Satan has to go to the throne of God to talk about you. The Bible didn't say he reaches over to his side and he talks to God about you. That means there'll be another throne. No, he's a vagabond. He, he, he going to and fro because he has nowhere to sit, saints. Uh, and, and he accuses the brother daily to our Father who is supreme authority. Okay, uh, let, let me say this before I move on. I, I, I feel it now, I'm gonna get excited. He can't sit beside the Father because the Savior is there. Are, are y'all getting this? So, so even knowing this lessens the authority I thought the enemy has. The enemy doesn't have the authority that he speaks of or acts like. He, listen, uses you against you to make you feel like he has the authority over you. Uh, you know what's the things that you do is from a thought by him or a suggestion? I, I, I've never seen the devil knock on your door and say, come on, I got a car here, I want you to ride me, we gonna go somewhere. No, he'll make a suggestion, you'll get in your own car and you'll drive yourself there. But it'll feel like he has authority over you. But God told us in Christ Jesus, he has given us authority over the enemy. Are, are y'all with me here? Now, you got to have authority to give authority over somebody. I'm not helping anyone or y'all just gonna stay quiet all night. If you just gonna stay quiet all night, it, it's okay.
Well, that, that, that is, that's a, that you stand the devil and he will flip.
That, that's a, that's, that's authority, that's a command given one who has authority, alright? So sovereignty is the state or the circumstance, the area of being in supreme authority. We say our God is sovereign and he had, he's, he, he has sovereignty. He is in a position that there's no one greater than him. We sing the song, but do we really believe no one's greater? We sing it all the time, but do we really believe there's no one greater than him? Are y'all, are y'all with me? Okay? So sovereignty can be defined as the nature of God by which he exercised absolute might and right in ruling over all things according to his own good pleasure. He is in total control of all creation from eternity. Good God almighty. Uh, okay, um, I, I don't know if I wrote this scripture down. We may have it again, Hebrews, I think it was in Hebrews, Reverend Greenlee. When, when the Bible says, uh, I think I wrote down, the Bible says this, uh, when he could not swear by anybody. Look at the sovereignty of God. Uh, when he was talking to Abraham, he could not swear by anybody. Look at the sovereignty of God, so he swore by himself. Can somebody find that scriptures in Hebrew, uh, Hebrew six, I think. Uh, uh, look at the authority of God, uh, uh, look at the power of God, look at the might, uh, the ruling of God uh, over all things, uh, um, and it's all according to his own good pleasure. Look at the control of God. Uh, he's controlling from eternity, not from time. He's controlling from eternity. What, what scripture is that? Did anybody get that Hebrews? It's in Hebrews. You guys, Sister Esther, go ahead and say it.
I have it in ESV, it's Hebrews six thirteen. For when God made a promise to Abraham, since he had no one greater by whom to swear, he swore by himself.
Stop right there, highlight that, somebody give God a praise. Because this shows the sovereignty, the control, the command, um, the ruling of God, uh, that he looked for somebody. Satan, where are you? Well, you were created like the rest of us. He was looking for somebody and God know he couldn't find nobody because he created everything. And since he could not find nobody, it's the sovereignty of God, saints, this is the God that we serve. He swore by himself because he know he can't lie. He know he cannot lie. He cannot, he knows he's not gonna go off his plan. He knows nothing can thwart his, his will. Uh, so because he could not find nobody, this, the surety of God, he said, I'm gonna show you how sure I am. I can swear by myself. Good God almighty. I'm gonna preach that, I'm, I'm gonna preach that. Uh, I, I, I can, I can swear by myself. So, so God has not only the right to decrease something, but the power to carry it out. Alright, he can carry out his will precisely as he has determined. Okay, here it is, Sarah, uh, next year around this time, you gonna have a son. Uh, why did Sarah laugh at me? Uh, you, you read it, uh, Sarah said, I didn't laugh. Yes, you did. Uh, you laughed. Matter of fact, if you read Abraham laughed also. Why are you laughing at the God who's controlled over everything? Alright? I, I, I waited for you to get past childbearing age so that I can show you it's impossible. Sometimes God will allow the situation to get impossible to show you how much authority he has. Are, are y'all with me here?
Yes, sir.
He waiting for you to get to the point where you throw up your hands so that you can now praise him because he has everything under control. Sometimes God will wait till you get to the end of your rope and then he'll show you who's controlling and who's holding the rope that you're on. Uh, he'll wait till it gets so impossible to you can say out your mouth, there's no way it can happen, alright? Uh, no way it's gonna come to pass, no way it's gonna come around, no way it's gonna look good, uh, no way, no way, no way. Okay, here it is. When there is no way God shows up, it's amazing, the sovereignty of God. I'm gonna show up when there's no way. This is why we call him a way maker. He's a way maker because we concluded there's no other way. He comes and makes a way. He's a mind regulator because my mind is destroyed. I don't know how I'm gonna be unconfused by the confused things or the chaotic things I'm dealing with. He comes and he regulates the mind. Are y'all, are y'all with me? This, this is why we give him praise because the sovereignty of God, God shows up to show you where he's sitting. Uh, he shows up to show you where he's sitting. This is why we give him praise because uh, it doesn't matter if it's impossible, it's possible. Good God almighty. So what God does, he, he's, he is ruler of the universe. He is free and has the right to do whatever he wants. He is not bound or limited by dictates of cre- created beings. He's not limited, uh, because you think he can't do it. You don't limit him because you say, Lord, I don't know how you gonna do it. They don't force him to do it faster. I, 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 it don't, it doesn't make him move any faster. Are, are y'all with me here? Uh, your little situation, uh, in, in your little home, your little job, you know, your little tiny situation you going through. Uh, he didn't move any faster with the Hebrew boys. He didn't move any faster with Daniel in the lion's den. Uh, he didn't move any faster with Joseph in the pit. So dictating to God doesn't cause him to move faster. He's sovereign. Are y'all with me now? He does whatever he wants, uh, and he's not bound or limited by our dictates. So you might as well give him praise. Uh, because uh, the crocodile tears, if he says two weeks, he'll turn it around. Guess what? It's gonna be two weeks. The crocodile tears, you can cry, but you gonna cry for two weeks. Uh, i- if he says two days, you gonna cry for two days. You're not gonna, he's not gonna switch a half a day because you cry. Uh, he's not bound or limited by our dictates. Are y'all with me here? But we give him praise, we, we serve him with gladness and with honor because he is sovereign. He is in control, good God almighty. He is ruler over everything. I, 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 I hope I don't sound too dramatic. Uh, so, so God is under no external restraints whatsoever. He can be nothing less, he can't be nothing less than sovereign. Oh my God. He can't be anything less than sovereign. To reduce God's right or power, even in the smallest degree, is to create another G, another God. Alright? Or a small G. Well, we try to reduce the power of God. Alright, this is what man is doing now by trying these AIs and these, uh, creating these, uh, these clones and, and, and trying to merge a cat with a sheep. Uh, trying to be our creator, a, a, a little small G, you, you know? A, a, a little small D, uh, uh, you know, got a rat and a raccoon, uh, uh, coming together and trying to come up with something. Man refused to acknowledge that God has control and God has created all things. Are y'all with me? There it is, Hebrews chapter six thirteen, uh, when he couldn't swear by himself, that's, that's it. Uh, when he couldn't swear by anyone else, he swore by himself. Shows the sovereignty of God, shows that he is sovereign. Are y'all with me so far? Okay? Here it is, so though God is sovereign, he does not rule randomly. But in accordance with his other attributes such as righteousness, holiness, love, mercy and grace. His other attributes meet to superintend his sovereign actions. Good God almighty. He's sovereign, but is not random. Because when he rules, it's included with his righteousness, his holiness, his mercy and his grace. Oh, God. I'm getting overwhelmed by the mysteries of God. Um, uh, he rules, but it's superintended by his holiness. It's superintended by his mercy, his love, his grace and his righteousness. So he doesn't just randomly do something. Uh, when it's done, it's already included with love, righteousness, holy mercy and grace. Good God. Uh, here's the thing, when one goes to hell, um, you have to think about the time that was allotted for you to heed his counsel. I don't care, listen, I don't care if it was twenty years, that was twenty years you could have taken heed to his counsel. So God does not rule randomly. But it's all according to the attributes that we have discussed, okay? So when God rules, he's ruling by his solitarity, his, his blessings. He's ruling by his guidance, his gifts. He's ruling by his decree, his patience. He's ruling by his decree, his patience, his power, his goodness, his wrath, his faithfulness, his grace, his cursings. All this is included and superintended in his sovereign ruling. Good God almighty. This God, this is the mystery. This is when we fall lost in who he is. God includes all that in his sovereign rule. All that included in the sovereignty of God. So God's sovereignty may sometimes involve testing in the form of calamity and trials, but never without love, faithfulness, and compassion. His sovereign will may appear for a moment to be without purpose, yet his ways are always perfect. And this is the scary part, the mystery part, which we gonna go to sleep just saying, Lord, I just rest in you. Because sometimes he makes decisions that seems like they are without purpose. Can I give you, can I just give you one example? Why, God, why would you give Joseph a dream that he's going to rule? And then allow his father and his brothers to laugh at him? What kind of plan is this? Then allow his brothers to throw him in the pit and decide whether to kill him or sell him. Sometimes his sovereign rule may appear for the moment to be without purpose. But, but, but you don't know what discussion he had with Joseph in the pit. Are y'all with me here? Uh, but when we look at God's sovereign rule, we see it's always perfect. Okay, okay, I, I, I'm trying to slow down here. Perhaps that he, he, he allowed his brothers to sell him, yes. How else are they gonna get him to Pharaoh? The reason why it seem like it's without purpose is because he didn't tell you everything. Stop getting mad at God because he just want you to trust him. Uh-huh. He ain't got to show you nothing. If he gonna show you everything, then he don't need you to trust him. Where's, where's your faith gonna kick in if he's got to show you everything? But he allowed his brothers to sell Joseph so Joseph can get in position to save his brothers. All right, now, now here's the sovereignty of God's plan, which at sometimes for a moment seems without purpose, but here's the perfect thing. At the end of Joseph's, Joseph's, uh, at the end of Joseph's purpose, he tells his brothers, what you meant for evil. Good God almighty. God meant it for good. But I didn't see it, you didn't see it, but now I can recognize it. Because for a moment it appeared without purpose, but my job and my desire is to hold on because I know God's plan is always perfect. Are y'all with me here? God sometimes has to reduce a thing to add a thing. Ask Gideon. Ask Gideon. But sometimes he has to put you in a cave to make you a king, ask David. Sometimes he has to knock you off your horse for you to be an evangelist, ask Paul. Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes he's got to pull you out of your profession to call you to be a fisher of men, ask Peter. Good God almighty. Uh, it don't make sense, but for a moment it seems without purpose. But I'm telling somebody tonight, you gotta hold on. When you understand the sovereignty of God, you know his way is perfect. That's why Paul says, and we know. Good God almighty. And we know, we know, what do we know? We know that all things. How do we know that? Because we know the sovereign Father. That's how we know it's all gonna work together for the good. That's how I know COVID was not it. That's how I know that this is not it because it's all gonna work together for the good. And we know. Now, the only way you can say that, you have to know that he's sovereign. The only way you can say that, you have to know that you're serving a sovereign God who has authority over everything. This is why Paul says, and we know that all things, all things work together for the good. His sovereign may appear for a moment without purpose. Somebody say, hold on. Somebody need to hear this. Somebody say, just hold on, just hold on. It may for moments seem without purpose, but his will always, always perfect. No word expresses it more meaningfully than that of, uh, Rev, if you could turn to Psalms thirty-three six. Uh, the introduction of this, of, of that word or, uh, the word breath of God, or breath of God. Uh, breath being the symbol of his almighty creative will. It's the precursor or prior cause of all that is. This is how sovereign he is. He breathe. If you didn't have authority, you couldn't do that. This is how sovereign he is, how much authority God is, how much power God is. He breathe. Psalm thirty-three six. Read that for me, a rev.
By the word of the Lord were the heavens made, and all the hosts of them by the breath of his mouth.
Okay, okay, then who has power? Who has power? Because all this happened by, the psalmist says, the word of the Lord. Read it again, uh, uh, Rev for me.
By the word of the Lord were the heavens made, and all the hosts of them by the breath of his mouth.
By the breath of his mouth, the sovereignty of God, he's sovereign, he has authority, he rules everything from eternity. By the breath of his mouth, all things were made. Are y'all with me here? Okay, so for he spake and it was done. He commanded and it stood fast. Look at verse, verse nine. That's what verse nine says. Showing his authority, showing his, his, his power, all right? This mode of statement heaves back to the first chapter of Genesis, where on some eight occasions, the uninterrupted steps of the creative production are introduced with the formula God said. Now, check this out. If Satan had the authority, he would have interrupted God when he was creating. Oh my goodness. I want y'all, I wanna separate because the world will have you thinking that the devil's on the same shoulder. No, 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 now the God and Satan and Jesus and Satan looking at each, no, 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 no. It doesn't work like that. Uh, stop trying to draw Satan, all right? Uh, uh, he's a peon. Don't, don't, don't even try to imagine him. Not on the level of the God that we serve. Are y'all with me here? Uh, the Bible says he spake so for the, the eight steps or eight occasions, they were all interrupted. Why? Because God was talking. Now I, now I'm getting this. Uh, now I'm getting, oh, I'm gonna do a series out of this. Uh, 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 Reverend Allen, uh, 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 assistant, uh, uh, Sister Renee, uh, he talked and no one could interrupt him. For God said, for God said, let there be, for God said, for God said, for God, uninterrupted. Now, if anybody had some authority, they would have stopped and say, hold on now, why are you gonna do the moon and the stars before you do the, the sea and the mountains? Why would you do it? Why would you make man laugh? If anybody had any authority, they probably would have added their own little thing in there. Notice, uh, uh, for eight occasions, they were all uninterrupted steps of the creative production. Uh, and all was introduced with the formula God said. Who has the authority? Oh, my father got all the authority. All right, so God made heaven and earth by his spirit. The heavens were garnished. He laid the foundations of the earth by the wisdom. He founded the earth by understanding. He established the heavens. Sovereign of God, his hands stretched out the heavens and all their hosts, he commanded. Heaven and earth, he is handmade, and so all those things came to be. He made the sea and the dry land. God did this because God is in control of everything. He created every angel. He created the fallen angels. He created Lucifer. He created the stars. He created you and I. He created the heavens. Are, are y'all with me here? Uh, he is so sovereign, he said, I created, listen, the stars so that you can look at it and determine the seasons. That's how powerful God is. I want you to be determined the seasons by, uh, by the stars. I, 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 I put everything in order. We are so caught up in messing around with each other. We in each other's business. We are gossiping about each others and we're not in God's business. If you was in God's business, you'll be overwhelmed how in order everything is. Uh-huh. The reason why you think things out of order because you're talking to man. If you talk to God, you'll see how everything is in order. Now, how can a devil interrupt God's plan for my life? If he had that power, he would have interrupted God before I was born. God said, I knew you. How much authority he got? I knew you before you were born. Uh, I knew you when you in your mother's womb. That's how much power I had. I had power to stop you from coming into this earth, uh, and I had power to allow you to come into this earth. That's why I thank God that I'm here. Uh, because with his power, he created me. Are, are y'all with me here? With his authority, everything happened because God said it. Everything happened because God spoke it. Everything is to be because of his authority, because of his sovereignty. He is the first and the last. He is the Alpha and Omega. Christ declared that. He is the beginning of creation by his will. Heaven and earth were created and were created. Uh, it's all by his authority, his will. It's all because of who he is. All of this, me talking, you responding. Oh, not tonight because you're quiet. Me talking and you're listening. All of this came to be. All your little internet, all, 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 everything, all your little jobs, all your little issues, all your little trials, all your little victories, uh, uh, all your little favors, all, all that come to be because of the sovereign God we serve. If, if nothing else, before we get into these scriptures, why, uh, Reverend Greenlee pulled some of the scriptures up. Let's just take a moment and say, Lord, we thank you for being in control. He is in control. He is in control. He is in control. He is so in control, he can put you in a di- a lion's den and then shut the lion's mouth. That's how much control he is. And listen, uh, he's in that much control that he can stop the lion from doing what he naturally would do and that would get something to eat. He will put Daniel in a den and shut the lion's mouth. Who's in control? Because if Satan was in control, the lion would have eaten up Da- Daniel. Are y'all with me? Because Daniel had so much prophecy, he had to speak. Uh, uh, anybody getting this? Uh, but, but the lion shut his mouth up because of who's controlling him. Uh, it's the one who created. Now, I know Satan probably told the lion, he looks so good. I know, I know you wanna eat Daniel, but, but I can see the lion saying, listen, 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 listen. I've got someone bigger than you to worry about. Uh-huh. Uh, I got someone bigger than, in, bigger than you and more in control, uh, than who you are. And I dare not go against the will of the Father. That's why Jesus said, now, you, you can't do nothing. You can't harm me. I, I'm carrying out the Father's dilemma, his plan. Uh, I got to go to the cross. I'm facing Jerusalem. I got to get there. That's the plan of God. Now, what makes, uh, us, uh, excited about the mission and purpose of Christ Jesus is because not only did he carry out the dilemma of God, he stayed on the dilemma of God. That is the perfect will. Uh-huh. I, I, you, you know that. I, I, can I, can I just go there? Uh, Satan wanted Jesus to come off the dilemma of God. Uh, if you are the son of God, then cast these stones into bread. Now, trying to get him to come like he do you and I. Uh, we get off the course so fast. Uh, uh, if you're a child of God, then go do this. And what we do, we heed to the voice of the enemy. But Jesus was showing us that we can stay on the dilemma of God and carry out the dilemma of God. Jesus said, no, it is written. Sometimes all you got to do is tell yourself, the inner self, I'm talking about the enemy, enemy. Sometimes you got to tell the enemy, it's already written. One, it's written, I'm gonna see him face to face. Two, it's written that he has given me charge. Uh, and it's already written that he will watch me and he'll keep me in perfect peace if I keep my mind to stay on him. Uh, I, I can stay on it. You know, it's, it's straight and narrow. It's, it's straight and narrow. It's called the dilemma. It's called the perfect will. But here's the sovereignty of God. I, I'm preaching tonight. Uh, this is revival tonight. I, I, we gonna turn Bible study revival. I might as well go ahead. Here's the sovereignty of God. Uh, Sister Jasmine, uh, he loved us so much, you have gone off the course, but he's got a dilemma. Uh-huh. It's gonna get you back into his perfect will. God sometimes will allow, I said this Sunday, his permissive will to get you back to his divine will. Uh, that's the sovereignty of God. You won't scare him because you know, tripped up and you wanted to do your own thing. You don't scare him. Uh, he's gonna carry out his plan for you and I. Uh, if nothing else, grace and mercy gonna make sure you see him face to face. I know that's right. I, I'm so glad grace and mercy follows me all the days of my life. They gonna make sure I get there. Uh, that's what I love about God, his sovereignty, his authority. Uh, because grace and mercy has been commanded by his authority to make sure I see him face to face. Are, are y'all with me here? Okay, turn to Proverbs chapter three, verse nineteen. Proverbs chapter three, verse nineteen. Go ahead, uh, Rev.
All right, all right, darling.
Okay, go for it before you start, uh.
Uh, okay, uh, there is no word like broken in the life of a true child of God. No matter what the devil, no, no matter where the devil, the wind, you know, the storm, whatever it is. There is no word like broken in the life of a child of God. And that will give us, you know, that stand, trusting God and believing in him in everything we do. He works out for our own good. Amen.
Amen. Now, good, good observation, Dick. Here's, I, I know we, we still got a couple more. I, 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 God somehow, he slowing up time. I'm glad you got your hour, uh, because we gonna get to this Bible study tonight. How many so far faith has increased? You know why it's increasing? Increasing by the word of God. Faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. Tonight, our faith should be on another level because what we gonna learn about him. Proverbs chapter three, verse nineteen. Go for it, Rev.
The Lord by wisdom hath founded the earth, by understanding hath he established the heavens.
Okay, now, before you go on to next one, I remember all this I just talked about. His hands stretched heavens and, uh, and all their hosts, he commanded. All that is scripture. All that is scripture because we call here the word Bible church. This ain't the church of what's happening. It's called here the word Bible church. So Proverbs three nineteen is going to just tell us exactly what I just said. Okay, Second Kings chapter, uh, two, uh, Second Kings chapter nineteen, verse fifteen. Read that.
And Hezekiah prayed before the Lord and said, O Lord, God of Israel, which dwellest between the cherubims, thou art the God. Even thou alone, of all the kingdoms of the earth, thou hast made heaven and earth.
Okay, did y'all catch what this guy said? Art the God, even thou alone. Circle that. Alone. Of all the kingdoms of the earth, thou hast made heaven and earth. Job chapter thirty-eight, verse four.
Where wast thou when I laid the foundations of the earth?
Oh, hold on, hold on. Who's talking? Who has the authority to say that? Wait a minute. Who, who, who questioned Job? Who has the authority to say where? It, it gotta be a sovereign God. Okay, Job thirty-eight four. I'm sorry to stop you, uh, Rev, but I, I think it's gonna be like this for the rest of the night. Job thirty-eight four.
Where wast thou when I laid the foundations of the earth? Declare if thou hast understanding.
Where were you? Now, if you got an idea, tell me. If you was around and I didn't see you, let me know where you at. Because the last time I checked, I'm sovereign. I command and I rule from eternity. Isaiah forty-two five.
Thus saith God the Lord, he that created the heavens and stretcheth them out, he that spread forth the earth and that which cometh out of it, he that giveth breath unto the people upon it, and spirit to them that walk therein.
This is the God we serve, the sovereign God we serve. Isaiah forty-four, six, and then nine through ten.
Thus saith the Lord, the king of Israel and his redeemer, the Lord of hosts, I am the first and I am the last, and besides me there is no other.
Stop right there. If you didn't highlight that, I, I, I ain't see nobody wave their hand. Uh, this, that is so good to know. That is so good to know. He's the first and the That is so good to know. He's the first and the last. Okay, here it is, before you go on. If God's the first and the last, Sister Mary, then that places my problem in the middle.
Alright.
I'mma stop right there. I, I, I'mma stop right there. Uh, it, it, I, I'mma stop right there. I could, I could run around my office right now. If he's the first and the last, that places my problem in the middle. Somebody shout hallelujah. That, that places my problem in the middle. If he's the first and the last, that places my problem in the middle.
Hallelujah.
So that means, uh, uh, Sister Laverne, my problem can't be it. And that's it. If he's the first and the last. Okay, keep going, Rev.
Isaiah forty-four, nine through ten. They that make a graven image are all of them vanity, and their delectable things shall not profit. And they are their own witnesses. They see not, nor know, that they may be ashamed. Who hath formed a God or molten a graven image that is profitable for nothing?
Right. Laughing at him. Everything you make, listen, is from my material. Everything man makes is from the material. One preacher talked about the iron being made so that they can make the nails to crucify our Savior. All we doing is using created things by God. Alright, we ain't creating nothing. We ain't creating nothing. We can be stewards over what has been created, but we ain't creating anything. So what God is saying, you can make your little graven images and your little small G's. Uh, but you do know you're using my material. That's my wood. Uh-huh, that's my stone. That, that's my stuff. Using my stuff to use, to try to use against me. He's trying to use my stuff against me. I made that stuff. Okay, alright, let's keep going. Forty-five and twelve.
Forty-five, twelve. I have made the earth and created man upon it. I, even my hands have stretched out the heavens, and all their hosts have I commanded.
If, if he don't have authority, then why is he saying and talking like this? If the Father we are serving, if the God that we serve don't have authority, then why is he talking like this? Like he controls everything, if he doesn't have control of everything. Isaiah sixty-six and two.
For all those things hath mine hand made, and all those things have been, saith the Lord. But to this man will I look, even to him that is poor and of a contrite spirit, and trembleth at my words.
He said, I made everything. I made everything. I want you to know that. I made everything. I see everything. I know everything. I control everything. I have the authority over everything. So you, we cannot shake God because he's sovereign. Have you ever tried to hold a little kid, you know, you holding them up and they squirming and, and, and they doing all this? They ain't getting out your arms. They, they moving, they bending their back and, and they crying and all that. They ain't stronger than you, but they act like they are. This is what God's saying. You're screaming around, but you don't realize I control everything. Jonah, chapter one, verse nine.
And he said unto them, I am in Hebrew, and I fear the Lord, the God of heaven, which hath made the sea and the dry land.
What Jonah's saying. Let me tell you who I fear. I fear the one who made, who made the sea and the dry land. Why are you giving us all these scriptures, Pastor? Because I'm trying to show you that the God that we serve is sovereign. He has control over everything. Everything was made by him. Are y'all with me here? There is not a plan that he does not know about. Revelation, chapter one, verse eight.
I am Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the ending, saith the Lord, which is-
Hold on, this got to be the son of God. Cause how can he declare this? Okay, Revelation one eight.
Uh, the beginning and the end, saith the Lord, which is and which was and which is to come, the Almighty.
Almighty. Read fourteen, chapter three, verse fourteen.
And unto the angel of the church of the Laodiceans write, these things, saith the amen, the faithful and true witness, the beginning of the creation of God.
Okay, so Christ, uh, the Father, Christ, uh, is showing us that I was there in the beginning. I was the Godhead. Let us make. And then the utterance started creating out of the mouth of God. Chapter four, verse eight.
And the four beasts had each of them six wings about him, and they were full of eyes within, and they rest not day and night, saying, holy, 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 Lord God Almighty, which was and is and is to come.
Now, you have to be eternal to be was, is, and is to come. And you have to be great for angels to bow down and call you holy. God Almighty. Are, are you seeing what the angels declaring? Okay. God, awesome. Sovereign providence is the place we feel most secure. Most free. When we understand he is sovereign and understand the sovereignty of God. We may not always understand God's ways, but one thing we know, we are secure and we are free. Because we are children of a sovereign God. This is so important to know. He's a sovereign God, okay? His ways are infinitely higher than, higher than ours. He sees all from his timeless and eternal perspective. We can however, trust his heart for, he has total power over all evil and perfect goodness towards us. Are y'all with me here? Anybody got any questions? Just got a few more slides. Just, 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 just stay with me. His ways are higher than ours. And he sees all things, here it is, from timeless eternal perspective. Y'all already know what you gonna do tomorrow. Well, Pastor, we don't know if it's gonna be, he already know. So why not put your trust and faith in one who already knows, who was, who is, and who is to come? He's ruling. We talked about that in the other attributes. He's ruling outside of our time. He's rooted from eternity. He is first and last. He is beginning. Before the earth, he was. He was. Now, you can fight, uh, uh, Darwinism theorists, theorists, uh, and, and, and evolutionists. Who think that, uh, uh, that somebody had created God and, and, no, before he was. Before you were, he was. Before it was, he was. He is sovereign and he has the authority and the command and the power over everything he has created. Alright? Let's get these scriptures here. Colossians, chapter one, verse sixteen to seventeen. Colossians, chapter one, verse sixteen. Can everyone still hear me? Okay. Colossians one. You got it, Rev?
I got it. Colossians one, sixteen and seventeen. It reads, for by him were all things created that are in heaven and that are in earth, visible and invisible, whether they be thrones, or dominions, or principalities, or powers. All things were created by him and for him. And he is before all things, and by him all things consist.
Are y'all getting this? He's before all things. All things consist because of him. Everything's consistent before, is because of him. He is before it all. The reason why he's not shaken or moved by what's going on. Now, what's going on in this world moves you and I. But we are in the hands of, of an unmovable God. Look at somebody and tell them to stay stable. Just stay stable. Just stay, just, just calm your anxiety. When, when, when you feel like you're getting a little too anxious, the Bible says, be anxious for nothing. Be anxious for nothing. Those who are anxious is because, uh, I think Deacon Algo said it, because of unknowns, because they don't know what's going on. I already know it's all in his hands, so I have to stop being anxious for nothing. Psalms one forty-seven, verse five.
Great is our Lord, and the great of power. His understanding is infinite.
His understanding is infinite. His ways are past finding out. He's incomprehensible, but he'll give us enough to know him. I know you're saying, Pastor, this is, that's the mystery of God. Uh, we can't know all of him, but we can know him. In other words, our little minds can't take what we know about him now. That, that's why you're getting sleepy. That's why, uh, you can't stay up now. I, I could blow your mind for the next three hours, uh, and still, still, we haven't only gotten a crumb of who God is. So, so, so listen, when we say, Lord, I want to know you, make sure your mind is ready to receive what he's gonna show you. Cause he not gonna always show you what you want to know about him through favor and blessing. He may want to show you that he'll take you out in deep waters and you don't need a boat. Cause you gonna walk back. Are y'all with me here? He may not take you on the mountain. He may take you through the valley. To tell you that even through the valley of the shadow of death, you ain't got to fear no evil. Are y'all with me here? Uh, he may not give you favor in, uh, around good friends. He may prepare a table before you in the presence of your enemies. Are, are y'all getting this?
Yes.
It's the mysteries of God. So when we say we want to know him, just say, Lord, prepare me to know you. Okay. Ninety-two, did we do ninety-two?
Psalm ninety-two. Before the mountains were brought forth, or ever thou hast formed the earth and the world, even from everlasting to everlasting, thou art God.
Amen, amen. Psalms one oh three nineteen. Li- listen, uh, maybe somebody need to get this video, uh, of, uh, of tonight's lesson or all the attributes of God. And keep playing them back and forth and over and over again till it gets down in your spirit. That you're serving a God that's in control. You may have to play it over and over again. Tonight is not enough. Tonight is not enough. You got to play this over and over and over and over and over again. Till the enemy knows, uh-oh, they have woken up. No, not just woke because of who they are, woke because they a child of God. And then you know how much authority they have because of the authority he has that he gave to us. Are y'all with me here? Jesus said, all authority has been given to me. I got everything I need to carry on. And, and we need to keep reminding ourselves this and stop rehearsing the problem and rehearse the sovereignty of God. Psalm one oh three nineteen.
The Lord hath prepared his throne in the heavens, and his kingdom ruleth over all.
Oh my goodness. Do you mean Reverend Greenlee, nothing on earth can hold him? No. The only thing that can hold him is eternity. Over our heads here. He had to put his throne in eternity. Time would only reduce him. He's got to live and be in forever. And not in our time. Man wants to bring God down into time where they can control it. But he already told you, I am the first and the last. Listen, uh, God will outlast your little wooden idol. Uh, because he made the wood. He know wood ain't gonna last long. It gets corrupt. He know it's gonna get worms. It's gonna dry rot. So your little wooden idols ain't gonna last too long. Your little graven images won't last too long. Psalm one fifteen, three. Read these two in ESV. Psalm one fifteen, three.
Our God is in the heavens. He does all that he pleases.
Authority. He's in the heavens. He does all that he pleases. Isaiah forty-six, nine and ten.
Remember the former things of old, for I am God, and there is no other. I am God, and there is none like me. Declaring the end from the beginning, and from ancient times, things not yet done. Saying, my counsel shall stand, and I will accomplish all my purpose.
Now, the bulimia of God, the plan of God, uh, listen, I, I, I just want you to know. Oh, his plan is gonna be fulfilled, right? I, I, I know you, not, not on my watch. Well, guess what? He'll take you out of there, but his plan is gonna be fulfilled. Alright, uh, and, and his word is not gonna come back to him void. It's not gonna do that. It's not gonna do that. It's the same word that came out his mouth to create, his word is not gonna come back to him void. It's gonna accomplish that which he sent it out to do. That's powerful. That's awesome to know. When he sent his word out to find you, the devil could not stop it. When he sends his word out to bless you, the enemy cannot get in the way. That's why, listen, can I tell you something? Everything that God has for me, I am going to receive it. Every favor that has Thomas Eugene Cunningham on, guess what? Thomas Eugene Cunningham is gonna get it. Did I get that? There are things a sovereign God cannot do. I got maybe two more slides, but I gotta tell you what he can't do. We done learned what he can do. Let me tell you what he can't do. Y'all ready for this? Not. Just who he is, but because of who he is, God cannot. And it is impossible for him to lie. It's impossible for him to cheat. It's impossible for him to steal. It's impossible for him to sin. He cannot do it. He can't even have the thought of it. He's so pure. Okay, okay, let me tell you how, how, how impossible it is for him to not be able to do that. That's like me saying, I'mma come through this screen and come into your living room through my screen. It's impossible. It's impossible for God to lie, cheat, steal, or sin. Additionally, God cannot deny himself. Or contradict himself. He cannot change. That's why he said, is, was, is, and is to come. He cannot change. The same God that spoke to Pharaoh is the same God that's speaking to you and I. The same God that talked to Moses is the same one who called us. He cannot change. Alright? God is a God of means. The Bible teaches us that there are methods and means and instruments that he uses in order to accomplish his sovereign purposes. So we need to trust in his character. Maybe the reason why God wanted me to get us to study this, so that we could start trusting in his character, who he is. A sovereign, a sovereign God. See, you hear people saying, he's a sovereign God, but start asking, what does that mean to you? And what does that really mean? You'll find that most believers don't know what they believe. Because they want to go in and out of Bible study so fast that they keep their lights on in their car or keep their car running. They want to come in and out of church so fast. They want to fellowship- They want to come in and out of church so fast, they want to fellowship so fast, they don't even get to know the God that they serving. So the next time somebody want to, uh, just come out their mouth and say, you know, we serve a sovereign God, say, you know, I was thinking about that. What does that mean to you? See what they say. Well, you know, he, he has power over, well, what do you mean? Power over everything. You'd be surprised how many people believe but don't know what they believe. Reverend Greenlee, before I move on, I got one more slide, I think one more, two more slides. Here it is, Brother Bruce. When I was a Muslim, I learned more about the Bible to contradict you all than the Quran. Because the word is out. Christians don't know what they believe. The word is out. Jehovah Witnesses know that, that's why they try to take you to scriptures that you even thought about. Uh, that's why they trying to, that's why they open up their Bible, because they done sat down under their, uh, under their leadership. Uh, and they've learned how to go through certain scriptures, because they know some believers don't even read their own Bible about their own God. We need to know his character. Keep in mind, with the understanding that sovereignty believed produces humility, awe, and comfort. When you know he's a sovereign God, it produces humility, awe, and comfort. It produces those things. When you know he's a sovereign God, it humbles you. It puts you in awe. And it makes you comfortable. Anybody comfortable right now? Anybody comfortable right now? Nothing will ever happen in our lives that God does not either decree or permit. Nothing's gonna run past his authority. But everything's gonna run past his authority. Did y'all catch that? I like the way that I said that, I like the way I said that. Um, uh, I Do you not know every test and trial, he'll test you and I, but every affliction, every challenge and attack, he is aware of it? Every pain, every suffering, every up, every down, he is aware. Nothing goes past God. So let me end with this. So the sovereignty of God is not a problem. It is the solution. The sovereignty of God is not a problem, it is the solution. And now that we know, not just to say out of mouth, he's in control, we have learned tonight that he is in control. He created everything and everything was made by him. Okay. Uh, you want me to show you what authority is? Let somebody come in your house and try to run your house. You gonna say, wait a minute, this is my house. Okay, uh, you can wear your shoes, the mud on, all on your carpet, all you want, but this is my house. That's what God is saying. I, I, I know, I, I know you think that chair don't belong over there, and I know you think the, the lights need to be on, but this is my house. Don't come up in my house and try to run my house. You see how bad you act when somebody try to do that to your house? Then why did we try to act like we don't understand what God is saying? God said, I made all this. Don't come up in my house. And can, can I tell you something? Can I help you a little bit, uh, be- before you get excited? When you go into your house and, and, and you hear loud bark, and you go in the house, and then you see a, a little crate and a dog in it, that's because Satan is under control. The guy didn't get that guy. If he wasn't under control, he'd be all over the house and get back and stop jumping on them and, and they tearing up the furniture and all that. And you hear all this barking, and he can bark all he want. All I know is he's caged up. Because this is God's house. We are in God's house. And here's the wonderful thing, I'm not just visiting, I'm a child. Which means this is my house too. Cause I'm his son, you his daughter. So nothing's gonna go past him, but everything is gonna go past him. Are y'all with me? Go for it.
Uh, you reminded me, uh, my times when I'm doing delivery. So anytime I get to a place and I will see the sign, beware of dogs, I will pause and rethink before making another move, because I saw the word beware of dogs. So, uh, another thing is, like you talk about it, when they talk about faith, you know, faith has no stand until it's being tried. And that's why many a times when we go through stuff in life, it should be an opportunity for us to prove our faith. Before, especially before the unbelievers.
Amen, amen. That's powerful. Listen, listen, when, when your situation, you, you gotta say, don't bother, don't worry about it. You got a loud bark, but no bite. A, a, a child of God can say that. It's got a loud bark, it, it sounds loud. That situation sounds real loud, but it don't have no bite. Cause the God that I serve is in control. Okay, okay. Hey, this just came to me. Let me make sure this is the right scripture before I give it to you, and then I'm gonna give you your homework. Uh, I, I think it's Luke twenty-two, twenty-two. Let, let me, let me, let me just make sure. It's Luke twenty-two, twenty-two, before I give it to you. Luke twenty-two, twenty-two. Okay. Jesus says this, but behold, the hand of him that betrayed me is with me on the table. And truly the Son of Man goeth as it was determined, but woe unto the man by whom he betrayed. Oh, there is a plan. And Judas is not gonna stop the plan. Woe unto the one who's trying to stop the plan. Woe unto the enemy or enemies or those who've been used by the enemy to try to stop God's plan for your life. Woe unto them. Who would try to get in the way of what God is doing for you. Woe unto them. See, if, if, listen, Sister Renee, don't hang around me if you ain't gonna talk like a believer. Don't, don't even call me, don't email me, don't text me. If you ain't gonna walk around with some authority, I don't need you, because when it's a fight, I, I know you ain't gonna stand. Uh, but this, 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 act like you don't know me, go the other way. If you, that's the song say, if you see me walking down the street, just walk on by. Uh, just walk on by, because if you're not gonna act like a child of God, if you're not gonna stand with some authority, if you're not gonna let, listen, if, if you're not gonna let what Jesus did cause you to be able to live like a child of God, then don't talk to me. Uh, uh, because he ain't go through all that for me to whip it out. He didn't go through all that for me to throw in the towel. He didn't go through all that for me to run away. He didn't go through all that for me to give in. He didn't go through all that for me to turn my mind over. He didn't go through all that for me to allow the enemy to make me feel like I'm not favored. Jesus didn't go through all that. He didn't die so that I can kill myself. He didn't die so I can feel like I don't have no purpose. He didn't die so to feel like I don't have a destiny. No, uh, he's showing me that all and everything is in his hands. Jesus said, you can't kill me, I laid my life down. You can't kill me, I'm doing it myself for those who want to believe in me for everlasting life. Can I tell you, I'm gonna get excited, can I tell you something? With the authority that God has given us, somebody turn to Romans, uh, is it Romans, uh, Romans chapter two verse six? Uh, no, no, here it is. It's 2 Corinthians chapter 10 verse five. Let me go, let me go there. And we might just go out with a bang. 2 Corinthians chapter 10, verse five. This is what the authority of God has given you and I. Uh, 2 Corinthians chapter 10, verse five. Uh, with the authority he has given us, I'mma hold my Bible up so you'll know. With the authority, the sovereign God we serve, this is what he told you you can do, uh, Reverend Greenlee. He says, you can cast down imaginations and every high thing that exhort itself against the knowledge of God and bring into captivity every thought to the obedience of Christ. Give you that authority, anything that acts like it want to raise itself above the word of God. I'mma give you the authority, you like a police over yourself. You raised that badge, wait a minute, hold on, you violated, now you're going against the law. He's giving me the authority to cast every thought, the thought to say, I'm not gonna mount up to anything. The thought to say, it's not gonna work out. The thought to say, I'm not gonna be favored. The thought to say, God's not gonna bless me. The thought to say that God don't have a way, I know where, every thought that tries to exhort itself, every thought in my imagination, every thought that tries to get above the scriptures, the Lord says, I'm giving you authority to cast them down. Anybody, uh, excited about that? Anything, uh, the, the enemy tries to do, I can call it down. I can say, that's a lie, you a lie, and the truth is not in you. I don't care what you say, it's about what God says, because your authority doesn't, doesn't mean anything. Because the God I serve is sovereign. Somebody say, he's a sovereign God. He's a sovereign God. He's a sovereign God, he's sovereign, sovereign, he's sovereign, sovereign, he's sovereign. He has all authority in his We sing it. He got the whole world in his hand, and then we cry and we run when a situation come our way. You don't believe that. Do you not know after you have been, have you been, uh, listen, uh, gone over the review of who God is? Do you not know you're gonna be tested this week? If the Lord's will, the enemy gonna try what you learned tonight. He want to see, do he had it all in your hands? I, I want to see if, if, if he gonna be able to stand and hold to what you know. Somebody may have to deal with something this week, but I'm telling you tonight, I'm telling you tonight that the God that we serve has it all under control. Okay, here's your homework. Here, here's your homework. Uh, 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 listen, I, I, I want to make sure you stay up for this. Uh, I know I talk a lot, but, but that's okay. I pray that God will keep you awake, because you'll leave here and you'll go right and watch some TV. You'll leave here and you'll go do something else and stay up for two hours. So, so just rebuke that sleepy demon right now. Uh huh, because you gonna get your homework. Uh huh, uh, that's the dilemma of God. Uh, uh, that's the plan of God. You gonna get your homework, okay? Are y'all with me? Somebody shout, God is sovereign.
God is sovereign.
God is sovereign.
Amen. Here's your homework. Got two questions for you that, that you gonna give me your answers next week. The first question is this, can you think of a situation you can share with God's sovereignty, touch your life, and you only realized it in retrospect? You think of a situation, you can share with God's, with God's sovereignty, touch your life, and you can only realize it, or you only realize it in retrospect? I want you to write that down. And guess what? I'm, guess what I'm praying? Uh, 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 Sister Mary, I, I pray in the Lord, give you good health and strength so that you could be here next Wednesday if it's his will, and give me your answer. I, I pray that you are in good health. I pray you feel so good next Wednesday that you will know what to do, so that you can answer your question. Did everybody get that? Can you think of a situation you can share with God's sovereignty, touch your life, and you only realized it in retrospect? Here's the second question. How might a fresh look at God's sovereignty impact your prayer life? Now, next week, it's gonna be all about your answers. I may have a, I may have one or two slides to sum up the sovereignty of God and what we learned, but you gonna talk next Wednesday. We got all these scholars, I got to hear these answers. How might a fresh look at God's sovereignty impact your prayer life? Anybody need me to go back to the, the question before? Matter of fact, uh, um, Dignas Britson, if you don't mind, you got the questions. Do a mass email, whether they had Bible study or not, send it out. Even if they don't want to answer it, you can't say Pastor didn't give me the question. One thing you not gonna say in heaven? Pastor didn't, um, no, Lord, no. Now, we know ain't no line in heaven. I'mma give you all I got. So that we can grow in the admonition of the Lord. I'mma give you everything I got. Okay, Dignas Britson, you got both questions now?
Man, thank you Pastor, I am going to enjoy my sleep tonight, knowing that I don't have anything to worry about. I need this to soak in and just get it within myself. This is why the Hebrew boys could be so confident. And even Daniel and all of them so confident to say, even if he doesn't deliver me, I'm still not gonna bow down to you. You have to know how powerful and how awesome and how sovereign the God you serve is. The disciples, John, now you know why he was in prison singing. He knew who had the power and authority. You have got to get into a place where you know beyond a shadow of a doubt that whatever happens, it's God's will. Like we can pray and believe it's gonna go in one direction, but even if it doesn't, it's no embarrassment. It's like, oh, I thought, I thought you said God was gonna do X, Y, Z. It's not that. If we stop out then like we are God and just pray, Lord, that your will be done, then there will be no embarrassment, we'll be okay, because then we can confidently say, if it's God's will, he gonna heal me. If it's God's will, he's gonna open the door, rather than saying, I know the Lord will. No, we don't, because we don't know the plan. And we don't know what all is part of that plan, just the assurance to know that if he does or does not, he's still God, he's still God.
Amen. You, you remember when, uh, uh, in my closing, First Lady, you remember when, uh, Peter was in jail and they were all praying? And the angel unlocked the gate, Peter walked out and walked to the house where they were praying, and they didn't know what was going on? He had to tell them to unlock the gate. They were praying. God did the impossible. Pray like you know he can do it. He, Peter had to say, unlock the gate. Y'all prayed, did I get freed? I'm freed. Uh, unlock the gate. Can I tell somebody, pray and unlock the gate? Don't pray and lock the gate, pray and unlock the gate. Like God will bring it to pass. Pray and unlock the gate, like God can bring it to pass. Any other questions, concerns on the sovereignty of God? Any questions based on your homework?
No, that, uh, I'm sorry, I know it's late. Uh, you, you, you mentioned about praying and unlock the gate. And it just triggered in me, like, you ask God something, but you still have to put yourself in the position of receiving. Because if you don't put yourself in the position of receiving, you still lock the gate.
Amen. I told, uh, Dr. Williams, I was talking to him, uh, yesterday, and we were just talking, and I said, this is what I learned. You want God to bless the work in your hands? I said, but I gotta put my hands on something for him to bless. He said, Cunningham, I'm gonna preach that. I said, yeah, I want God to bless the works in my hands, but I gotta put my hands on something. If you want God, if you want to see him, see it through, unlock the gate. unlock the gate when you pray, when you trust him. Act like it's, you have to believe that he is a rewarder of those who diligently seek him. This is why we open the doors of the church. This is why we have ushers for those to come. This is why we continue on in Bible study. This is why we continue on in service, because we trust the Lord. If they need to get saved and they need to come by way of here to work Bible church, we wanna be prepared. Are y'all with me here? Say, why you wanna have this? He ain't got no, it ain't got nothing to do with that. We gonna do what we were supposed to be doing. As children of God. Alright, gracious God, we thank you for the time that was allotted. Lord, we wanted to be recorded that we was more concerned about knowing who you are than the time. You control the time. We thank you. Even while we were listening, discussing, we remained in good health. Nothing happened. No one broke into our homes while we were in Bible study. No rocks was thrown through our windows. No burning crosses on our front yard. Thank you, Lord, for protecting us. We serve you and you only. You are our Father. We are your children. And Lord, tonight, we want to echo what you have already said about who you are. You are a sovereign God, and everything belongs to you. You are in control of our lives and everything around us. And we thank you for having a plan for us. Now, help us to stay in your will while you work your plan. We ask all these things. Lord, if you will it to be another Sunday, we coming with praise on our lips and the right heart. We ask all these things. In Jesus' name we pray. And all the believers say, amen.